Good evening. I now call the Monday, January 13th, 2020 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Gary Roberts to lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Chair Rankin. Would you please stand?
Let me come to you and ask you to give us the wisdom and knowledge we need to make decisions. May we make the right decisions, and may your will be done, in Jesus's name, amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great motherland for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no limitations just as for all.
Item number four on our agenda is roll call. Commissioner Rutherford?
Present.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Dusky?
Absent.
Commissioner Gator?
Yes, here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Here.
Item number five is the approval of minutes from the December 9th, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, moving on to announcements. Good evening again. My name's Matt Zurcher, and I am the Chairperson of Planning and Zoning Commission, and I will be presiding over this commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in an advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. The commission is bound by specific regulations and guidelines for considering applications, and there are also a surprising number of things the commission cannot take into consideration when reviewing an application. Finally, members of the commission are volunteers, and we are not paid employees. We donate our time for the betterment of the town. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into the record. Once the application has been read into the record, staff will present the case and their recommendations to the commission. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission will then direct any questions they have regarding the application to staff. After the commission completes its initial review of the application, the applicant will have the opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. After the applicant has completed their comments, I'll open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the current application being discussed. A little bit of a format change here this evening, so this evening, we have four public hearing items, and then we have two preliminary development plans, one for each of those general plan amendment and zoning map change. So this evening, we will hear general plan amendment 19-004, zoning map change 19-013, and then PDP 19-010, then open the floor for public hearing. After that, then we will then hear the other items on the agenda, and then open the floor for public comments after that as well. So with that, item number seven, public hearing items, we have general plan amendment 19-004 upon the application of Stone Ridge Homes LLC, a request for a general plan amendment from public quasi-public to low-density residential on approximately 11 acres located at the southeast intersection of Lucky Draw Drive and Goose Flatway Prescott Valley, zoning map change 19-013 upon the application of Stone Ridge Homes LLC, a request for a zoning map change from PL Public Lands to R1L PAD Residential Single Family Limited Planned Area Development on approximately 11 acres located at the southwest intersection of Lucky Draw Drive and Goose Flatway Prescott Valley, and preliminary development plan 19-010 upon the application of Stone Ridge Homes LLC, a request for preliminary development plan for 19 single-family home lots on approximately 11 acres located at the southeast intersection of Lucky Draw Drive and Goose Flatway Prescott Valley. Presenting this evening on behalf of the staff is Mr. Joe Scott. Go for it, Joe.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. You described the application actions for the property that's identified here on the exhibit. Again, the Stone Ridge master plan, which is shown here, well, the Stone Ridge master plan was first approved for 3,053 residential units, approximately 2,000 acres, approved on August 10th, 1998 by the commission, and included at the time 400 multifamily units, 740 attached single-family units, and 1,900 detached single-family units and various-sized lots. Rezoning the property was approved by ordinance 472 on August 26th, 1999. The first 249 units for unit 1, the area around the clubhouse area, was developed in 2001. Developers subsequently discovered that unit 2 cannot be developed in the area, first identified because of archaeological inventories that must be done before development can occur, and then they requested an amendment to the preliminary development plan and the zoning map change in order to find an alternate site for unit 2. The commission approved the request October 14th, 2002 meeting, and the council approved the same by passing ordinance 535 on November 7th, 2002. The master plan shown here is the one approved in 2004, the current configuration, and this reflects the 2002 amendments to accommodate changes to the residential development. Also, the intent was to relocate parcels for multifamily uses and to include the community recreation and commercial lots closer to the core area south of Old Black Canyon at the intersection of Stone Ridge Drive. The number of allowed multifamily units remain the same, but some of the smaller lots intended for a attached townhome product were replaced with various larger lots for single-family units in demand at the time. The actual number of residential units was reduced by 222 from 3,053 to 2,832. Again, this revised master plan was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission April 12th, 2004, along with a rezoning request. The Town Council approved the rezoning May 27th, 2004. So of the current approval of 2,832 residential units, approximately 1,198 have been plotted for single-family attached and detached housing products comprising units 1 through 8. This represents about a 39% buildout to date of the total approved units. This here generally shows the areas in yellow that have been developed, 1 through 8, through this time, and being about 40% of the total area, and the other areas again are on the approved master plan and have not yet been developed. As we pointed out, that there is still approval of pre-declaration water rights for the original 3,053 lots that can be developed or approved in conformance with the master plan or with a revised master plan that could be approved. Again, going back, the approved 2004 master plan included the location for the future school site, and that was indicated as a school site at the time and not as open space or park area. Going back, so this is, was the original tract QQQ, which was created as part of unit 5 in 2005. The general plan designation has always been public quasi-public, and the zoning PL, which is public lands, which is a case for all school sites in Prescott Valley. This shows the designation as public lands and the general plan designation as public quasi-public. Again, the Humboldt Unified School District had a 10-year time period to request ownership of the property to develop an elementary school. The school district never considered funding a school because of limited school-aged children in Stone Ridge at the time. Since no school was developed, the property is still in the owner's name, who now intends to develop the 19 single-family lots. Surrounding residential properties are designated low-density and zoned R1L10PAD, as is being A significant portion of Stone Ridge is maintained as conservation open space, as passive recreation area, being about nearly 50% of the total land area, which includes the golf course. The Stone Ridge villages were intended to be built around the core of the seven neighborhoods that are bound by substantial open space in washes, steep topography, hilltops that preserve some of the natural features and archaeological sites. The general plan 2025, again, identified the parks and multi-use paths developed in Stone Ridge for public use. And this shows the areas that are park area, PL zoning the green, but also indicates the location of the school site, which again is on, in the general plan, is indicated as public lands but other non-park PL zoning, so zone PL but not intended as park area. The plumbing development plan, which is shown here, included a narrative for the project and for the plumbing plan, and a revised narrative was provided to the commission dated December 31, 2019, was provided from the applicant sent to the planning commission on Monday, January 6th, for further, that further addresses drainage and grading issues and timeframes, along with lot elevations and existing trail locations. The plumbing development plan shown here for tract QQQ of unit 5 comprises 19 single-family residential lots and a drainage tract. Lots ranging sizes between 700 and 22,000 square feet, or the average size is 9,059 square feet. Proposed buildings will be single-story homes, approximately 25 foot tall to the roof pitch. Shown here, 18 of the lots are accessed off of the one internal roadway. One access is permitted by fire code because of less than 50 dwellings. Lot 967 will be a flag lot from the interior street. Lot 966 will be the only lot with access from Lucky Draw. Masquerading is proposed to accommodate the proposed single-family housing subdivision. The residential street section is comprised of a 40-foot right-of-way with 14-foot travel lanes, two-foot rolled curbs on the side, four-foot sidewalk on one side, and a four-foot parkway on the opposite side. Again, these roadways meet fire codes, and there will be provisions for no parking signs on the cul-de-sac on one side of the street. A proposed development is impacted by off-site runoff that is generated from Stone Ridge unit 5 and to the southwest of unit 5. The drainage is conveyed in the existing natural channel that would not be disturbed with the proposed development. The project is minimally impacted by off-site runoff. The areas surrounding the property have previously been developed with drainage basins generally directing the flows away from the project site. The current detention was designed with the unit 5 infrastructure plans. Original potential pond area was assumed to provide drainage for a school site, which is considered a higher development impact on drainage due to the parking and building area. No modifications to the pond will be required for this project. Proposed projects are located in Zone X on effective FEMA floodplain rate maps and is designated as outside the funded 500-year floodplain. Again, the proposed project will have the curb gutter channels and storm drain channels where they were sized to pass a 100-year peak rainfall event to the outlets. The post-development runoff is considered, is contained within the roadway and does not overlap the curbs. Masquerading would be required for site development. The owner estimates approximately three to four months, weather permitting, to complete masquerading. Existing Stone Ridge Trail diverses through the parent tract QQQ and is located about 50 feet from the closest point to lot 983. Dense, but shows a trail here and extends down here south of the existing lots. There were some questions regarding traffic impact. Again, the traffic impact, the original traffic impact for Stone Ridge accounted for trip generation from a buildout of the 3,053 residential units, along with a intended school site at that location. The 19 lots with 10 trips per day estimated could generate 119 total average trips, with the highest potential peak being between 4:00 and 5:00 p.m., generating 10% of the average daily trips, with a total peak of maybe 34 estimated peak hour trips. The school site of 500 students may have generated up to 290 peak hour trips. In regards to a letter received from a Charlie Harlow dated June, January 8th, regarding traffic safety, we were provided with a update addendum from the engineer stating that the main entrance to the proposed subdivision is on the outside of the horizontal curve, and Lucky Draw roadway is sloped, had a consistent grade from west to east. There are no vertical curves which create high points on Lucky Draw that would block the visibility of oncoming traffic. This provides site distance in both directions for the proposed access road. A road closure is not anticipated for the construction of the subdivision. Currently, the water, wastewater, gas mains are stubbed at the location in the roadway. The only unknown utility extension at this time is power. Unit 8 is required to shut down off Cloud Cliff Pass to extend wastewater collection main and APS mains to proposed intersections. This is not the case for this subdivision. Existing water and wastewater stubs are shown in the plumbing plat. And again, the existing roadway is signed at 25 miles per hour, and conservatively, there is 245 feet of site distance based on the attached exhibit, and that's indicated here and shows the adequate site distance for that intersection. A neighborhood meeting was held by the applicant December 11th, 2019, with all property owners within 1,000 feet having been notified. A summary of the meeting was prepared and provided to the commission, along with some letters from some neighboring property owners. So again, the proposed general plan amendment from low-density residential on tract QQQ is consistent with the surrounding general plan designations and does not significantly change the terms and conditions of approval of the Stone Ridge master plan. The property is not identified in the general plan 2025 as park or open space. There will be much fewer lots and, oh, there will be, again, 634 fewer lots than the approved master plan approval 1998. The traffic impacts from the 19 residential lots will be significantly less than that of the elementary school. The proposed R1LPAD zoning will be in conformance with the low-density residential land use designation, and again, consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. The plumbing development plan illustrated for 19 lots is consistent with the standards for the R1L zoning district, and staff supports requested GPA 1904, CMC 19013, and PDP 19010, and asks that commission consider these and make separate motions of approval on each, and with the, with the condition included for the rezoning. With that, I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you, Joe.
I also have the applicant's representatives are here, too.
Okay. This time, we'll open it up to commissions, questions from the commissioners. Does anyone have any questions of staff?
I do not.
I just have a few clarifying questions, Joe. As part of our addendum that we received just last week, so these 19 single-family homes, that will, they will be single-story homes, 25 feet tall to the roof pitch, is that correct?
Correct, that's what's been...
And then, even though it was zone public lands, this property has remained in private ownership for well over 15 years, is that correct?
That's correct. The, the, the school never took ownership of the property.
And as part of the original development deal for Stone Ridge, the developer set aside land for the school, and the school district had 10 years to take ownership of said property, and that started, what, in 2002, is that correct?
Actually, the, the thing started in the 98 approval.
Okay, so we're now looking at well over potentially 20 years.
That was first laid out in the school site with the original approval.
So they had 10 years to take ownership, and they have not done so, and it's been almost, well, now we're into 2020, so 22 years. Okay, and then, it was zone public lands in anticipation of a school going in, is that correct?
Yeah, again, the public lands, while used for public park stuff, is also used when, that would be more with the open space general plan designation. This is the same zoning designation, but with the public quasi-public general plan designation. So when you have the public quasi-public, then the PL would pertain more to things like schools and institutions, which use a PL zoning also. So even though it was PL, again, explained that even with the PL zoning, it was indicated in the general plan as other non-park PL zoning.
Okay.
And was never intended or counted as open space or park area.
And just, you know, just kind of, just for clarification, since the school district has decided not to build a school there, and they've had almost 20 years, the developer is now seeking to exercise his right to develop the land which is privately held?
With, with the approval of a zoning, of the correct zoning and general plan, yes, that would...
And then, I've seen it, you, you mentioned it, and I believe even the applicant can probably address this, but the trail system will remain unchanged, is that correct?
Correct, it's not, not disturbed by this project.
Okay.
As is the existing drainage channel is not disturbed. And also with the plumbing plan, about 50% of the whole total area of tract QQQ, about half of that area is developed, and half of it, about 50%, is remaining undeveloped.
And so we're asking, you're being, we're being asked to go from PL to R1LPAD, which then is pretty much all around that surrounding...
Correct, that's the single-family zoning designation shown here, and the light yellow, the, it's the light yellow, and the general plan is the low-density and the light yellow. On the zoning map is the R1L10, R1LPAD.
Okay.
So it's consistent with the surrounding.
All right, thank you, Joe. Does, does anyone have anything else before we invite the applicant up? All right, at this time, I'll invite the applicant up.
I'm Megan Hedstrom.
And do you have anything to add?
I think Joe covered pretty much anything. Do you have any questions for me?
Anybody have questions of the applicant?
No, no.
No? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before we begin the public hearing, I just want to address a few things that come up regularly, especially with a high-interest application like the one before us this evening. Second, I also think it must be, be said that in spite of how you feel, the commission is not a rubber stamp for development. In our roles as commissioners, we cannot behave or make decisions as the opinionated emotional human beings that we are. We are bound by a strict set of regulations that confine our review of proposed development, et cetera, to what is allowed by laws that govern land use, is allowed by state laws, allowed by town code, does it meet with current zoning, is the zoning change appropriate and legal, does it comply with the general plan? As I said in Dragnet, just the facts. There are also a number of things that the commission cannot take into consideration when reviewing any proposals. Some of these things we cannot discuss or take into consideration are water, views or premiums paid for views, amenities in the neighborhood, personality of the applicant, setting precedent. I would like to acknowledge that we have received many comments and concerns prior to the meeting from residents about the proposed project. Unfortunately, most of the written concerns we received are among these things that we cannot take into consideration. Things that can be considered and discussed are traffic, public safety, character as it pertains to the surrounding area, density as it pertains to location and the character of the surrounding area, appropriate zoning and procedure. We ask that you please keep your comments to the items we can take into consideration and refrain from talking about things we cannot consider. So here are the rules for public hearing. Speakers are limited to a three-minute period. Upon the conclusion of three minutes, please promptly finish your remarks. If you wish to comment, please remember that you may only comment on the application being discussed and not on any other issue. Please direct your pertinent comments to the commission through the chairperson and not to the applicant, staff, or individuals within the audience. Please keep your comments brief and to the point. Please do not repeat what others have already said. Speakers cannot donate their time to another speaker, and comments or offers from members of the audience are not permitted. So at this time, we'll open the floor to public comment, public hearing for general plan amendment 19-004, zoning map change 19-013, preliminary development plan 19-010. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up, and please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Susan Rio. My comment is Stone Ridge is a priority evacuation plan, which was reported in the Daily Curry on April 23rd of 2019. County rates subdivision is a high wildfire risk hazard. Residents have real concerns regarding the escape routes. Old Black Canyon Road is not paved all the way. Before more houses are built, residents feel a developer should be required to pave the access routes for emergency evacuations. In regards to the traffic study, we wanted to know when was this done, and are they considering the amount of people once they add to the, the housing, the number of cars and additional people that will result as a higher-density housing if there was an emergency and we needed to evacuate?
Good evening. My name is Bear Schimman. I'm a Stone Ridge resident. My concern, and my only concern, because this is of longstanding, as, as to my way of thinking, permitted in every way, is that these, these homes would be built and accepted into our master planned HOA, and I know that that is not a purview of the commission. I'm simply introducing it as in the public, in the hopes that the founder would take that opinion into consideration. I thank you all, good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Glenn Gustafson. I'm looking at the application in front of you. It says 11 acres, and that those 11 acres would be converted into 19 single-family home lots. The map that was shown shows 17 single-family home lots.
Anybody else?
966 and 967 are the custom lots. Do we show on that? 966.
My name is Sandra Hayashigawa. I have a home on Goose Flatway. My husband and I bought in that location because of that wild natural area out, out in, across the street from our, from our house. And if we hadn't been able to buy that house, we wouldn't have bought in Stone Ridge. And I think it's reasonable to, reasonable on our part to have assumed that it would remain wild because of the public use zoning. I sent a letter to Joseph Scott on December 17th, and I'd like to reiterate some of that here for the rest of the group to hear. When I attended the December 11th community meeting at the Stone Ridge Community Center, I was surprised and pleased to see so many residents in attendance. The buzz in the air was high with anger. Ms. Lowe, although I guess her last name is not actually Lowe, from Stone Ridge Homes LLC was conducting the meeting. She provided a brief explanation of her proposed project, and then proceeded to pretend she was interested in fielding questions from the floor. I know you're not concerned with that because of one of your things you just said. But it was upsetting to people that she and her company seemed totally impervious or totally unconcerned about things like environmental impact, hydrology... totally unconcerned about things like environmental impact, hydrology associated with the creek and rainwater runoff, geological impact disturbing the ambience of the area, property value concerns, premium owners paid for lots on the periphery of the area, more homes and still no improved emergency evacuation routes proposed. For me and my husband personally, it looks like a bait-and-switch situation entice people to buy homes with a highly desirable wild natural area across the street, zone for public use, and then a few years later, change the rules. This construction zone, right in, in the middle of areas already developed, will cause an unacceptable level of noise, dust, et cetera, et cetera, the beep, beep, beep of the trucks backing up. And no one in, in this, and no one believes the company's optimistic timeframe for completion. By the time this area is completed, residents familiar with how this company operates are estimating a minimum of three years until the area is completely built out. The traffic study that was conducted years ago, I think two thousand eight was the last date I heard, the company is indicating that that is adequate for deciding on evacuation needs. And I, and I think we need a new study because of the result of changing weather patterns created by global warming, warming, and all of the, the wildfires that are being caused. Although my husband and I are certainly concerned about the issues already expressed, we are troubled by the company's total lack of interest in how it's going to impact the lives, meaning quality of life of the residents of Stone Ridge, and it is even
Thank you.
more upsetting that the town of PB appears to be unconcerned for the welfare and concerns of the electorate.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
The area in question is not just any piece of land available in Stone Ridge for development.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Apparently there are more than a thousand acres owned by the company for development. Why does this company have to ruin this beautiful area, this particular parcel?
Ma'am, I need you, I need you to stop.
The creek area is, is so beautiful.
You need to stop, please. Your time has expired.
It provides a very, very nice place for people to, to walk and leisurely spend some quiet time away from their busy lives.
Okay, please sit down.
And also, it will probably lend itself to the elderly, the more predominantly increasing group of people.
Ma'am, you need to take a seat and let someone else speak, thank you. Wait for this. No clapping, please. As I said, there are no outbursts from the audience. If there are, we will stop public hearing. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Paula McCann, I'm a Stone Ridge homeowner for the last seven years, and I lived where this proposed zoning changes that we're meeting about today. I did go to the meeting that was required by, by you, for the developer to bring this to you, and we were basically told this would be developed whether we wanted it to or not, and that we all should have known that we were buying into a master plan. The master plan I bought into had this as public land. So I felt the town was dismissive, and it's my understanding that the Stone Ridge residents who are here, if they're allowed to stand, I don't want to break any rules, but if they're allowed to stand, we, we oppose this zoning change as a minor amendment to this plan because it has a major impact on us as residents of that area. We're concerned about our safety, evacuation, the traffic, view obstruction, which I know is not supposed to be a concern, and a loss of nature. I'm not opposed to growth and development in Stone Ridge, but does it have to be this open-space land? We've been tolerating the development of all the other open-space area along this trail, which has been going on over the last year, and we've relinquished that. This is our last little piece of land that we have available, to which us is priceless, and to the developer, of course, is easy building out because they're just adding more soil to that area. This open space is an existing trail, it creates a unique aesthetic character to our already densely populated neighborhood. It's a little gem enjoyed by joggers, walkers, dogs, bicyclists, families, and nature lovers. It's a corridor that promotes wellness in a safe manner for the elderly and for children, and it's a connector to our Park and Recreation Center. It's a better, excuse me, it's a better source of meeting your neighbors than any wine social exists. It's a home for coyotes and other animals, including the snakes, which I prefer not to see, but I would prefer to see those animals in their natural habitat rather than seeing them, the coyotes walking down my street as they have been doing with this recent development during the daylight hours. On a larger scale, with the rapid growth in Prescott Valley, including Granville, Pronghorn, and Stone Ridge, and Jasper, I'm concerned about our future success of the town of Prescott Valley, and feel that we need careful planning, city planning, including citizen input for this to occur, and I'm understanding that the mayor would like to have citizens more involved in our community planning. Before you decide to vote, or to send this on to further discussion, I ask you to come and see this area. Walk this neighborhood with me. See what it is that you're talking about. It's only eleven acres, the developer certainly has enough acreage in, within the Stone Ridge development to allow this to remain public land. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, come on up.
I am Charlie Harlow, and I live at Traders, on Traders Trail, which is directly behind the Stone Ridge Unit Eight A and B housing tract, which the Zoning and Planning Commission approved in November two thousand seventeen, with absolutely no consideration for the existing homeowners. The develop, the developer started grading Unit Eight in April two thousand eighteen, so for twenty-one months, we have lived with continual noise, dust, and all types of construction annoyance, and it is still under construction. This project totally destroyed one of the most scenic and beautiful areas within the walking path that all of our Stone Ridge community enjoys. Now the developer wants to finish the neighborhood by continuing to destroy the natural beauty of this remaining open space next to Lucky Draw and Goose Flat Way and the adjacent walking path. A city and town consists of a community of people, a community hears, cares, respects, and helps each other. We all moved to Stone Ridge to be a part of a caring and beautiful community. It is important that the Planning and Zoning Commission listen to the community who lives here, invested their lives to live here, and not just approve any and all of the developer's desires. Note, the developers do not live here. So I urge you to consider your community's feelings and concerns before you approve any changes or developments that affect our community's lives. Also, I know Joe just talked about, Joe Scott just talked about the letter that I sent in about the vision, the blind spots on Lucky Draw. I do not agree with the responses that Joe Scott got from his specialist, but I'd like you to make sure that a certified and qualified traffic engineer review the safety of the proposed intersecting cul-de-sac with Lucky Draw. Shown in your proposed drawing, the exit from the cul-de-sac has dangerous blind spots and visibility issues from Lucky Draw due to three S-curves and significant elevation changes on Lucky Draw. This should be addressed before any approvals. I know from personal experience, my wife and I, we walk that area all the time, and we have to listen carefully for any cars coming around the corner, and we just, and once we hear them, we stop, and, and, and then after we see the car, then we, then we head across the street, and nobody drives twenty-five miles an hour there. Another urgent issue needs to be addressed, I know that Susan just addressed this a little bit ago about the emergency exits out of Stone Ridge in case of a fire or flood.
Sir, your time has expired, thank you.
Okay. But make sure you put that note in there, too. That should be addressed before we get more development going into the, this area.
Thank you.
And your letter's been addressed, too. Got your letter? Okay, there you go, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Lauren Paz, I live in Stone Ridge. My backyard overlooks the area that is proposed to be developed. My comments are probably not going to be popular here. I relish the fact that there will not be a school built in our backyard. Nineteen homes is a small impact compared to what was already planned. We moved here six years ago, we did our due diligence, we knew we were moving into a master-planned community, we knew a school was proposed to be built, we knew that at the corner of Lucky Draw and Cloud Cliff, there was proposed high-density planning, which was later made into smaller units. The developer is a business person, they do have the right to build. The alternatives to a, to a school or other major public-use, non-park development is much, what they're proposing is much better. So when they, when everybody here says everyone in this room is against this, I am not. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Susan Duran, I'm also a resident of the area off of Traders Trail. I simply have two questions on it. When Joe was mentioning the build-out, he was saying twenty-five feet to the roof line. What I did not hear addressed, and I may have missed it, is we'd like to know how high the plat is going to be built up, because all of us are concerned about the views that are going out there, whether it's a concern of the builder or not. We all played, paid high premiums, premiums, not necessarily for view, but premiums because of the views, because of everything that we had, so that is a concern. So if we have a twenty-five there, but you're going to build another ten, ten feet up, like the private home up on Cloud Cliff went like twenty-something feet, that was not addressed, so we'd like to know twenty-five feet plus what? And how will that also be addressed to the, to the, okay, to the, the water runoff areas that are there, too? Because that will affect their, their runoff plane that you guys were talking about with the flood plane that they would be into, because that is always a very, very wet area.
I, I had the same concerns, and these little maps sometimes are hard to read, but if you, if you go into the, to the town, and I'm sure Joe would show you the, the large plat of it, it does show the elevations of the lots and where they are in conjunction with the road, and also the wash area and so forth, so they are readable, they're just darned small on this eight and a half by eleven.
Well, since you, since you have that little magnifying glass, can you tell me how much further from that twenty-five feet that's going to be? Are we talking it's going to be forty feet up from where it is now?
No, no.
No?
Actually, the...
Can Joe address that at some point, then, while we're here?
Yes, in fact, after we're done, we can invite staff and the applicant back up to address that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Roger Duran, I live on Traders Trail. I believe it was the city that created the, the park that is located right next to the proposed area for building homes, and because they have, it's illuminated, they have casitas there. So I'm assuming that they thought it was a very beautiful area to put this casita, chairs, picnic benches, but now you've destroyed the walking path, the walking path is there, but the view is gone, to the east, by the houses they built over there. Now, if you walk down the walking path with the homes they're proposing there, that view is killed, looking to the north. I think it's a wasteful amount of money from the, the town. Do you understand what I'm saying? You look quizzical.
Nope, I understand.
Okay, if you come out there and walk, I'd gladly walk with you, and many residents would gladly walk with you down the walking trail and show you what we're saying. It's a beautiful area, we have wildlife, and we like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, hold on just a second. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Joe Francis, I, Charlie Harlow is my neighbor, and we overlook all of this, including the R2 pad area. But we came from Big Bear Lake, California, and a number of years ago, there was a fire that approached the mountaintop community, and people were forced to evacuate. Three roads in, three roads out, people were turned away, they could not leave the mountaintop, they were forced to return to their homes, to burn to death, or they could have gone out to Baldwin Lake, if you've ever been out there, because that's where supposed people are supposed to run in case of fire. It was a miracle snowstorm in October, October fourteenth, I think, that stopped the fire. And I wasn't going to speak, but I think the more people mention the fact that there really aren't any good ways out of this community except for one, is asking for trouble because you're going to need a miracle to stop something if something happens. And so I'd say before you build anymore, there has to be some kind of traffic study done to disprove maybe what I know already, that the only thing that's going to stop a fire like that is a miracle, and we can't count on that all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice?
Hello, my name is Marv Trager. I'm a resident of Stone Ridge on Weaver Way, which is one of the streets that cul-de-sacks against the property we're talking about. And just to underscore the invitation for you to come and look at it, you don't really get a feeling for it from the map. The feeling you get when you look at the map is, well, there's an empty space, and we'll fill that space, and then it'll all be filled. And it isn't like that when you're actually seeing it, so I recommend that. The second issue is, there's always a conflicting business interest around the question of the height of a building. So where, as people now are concerned with the view, there's a concern that the builders might build it high enough so that they can then sell the view in addition to the home. And so that's why the question becomes pertinent, because there's a conflicting interest as to what the actual elevation is, and I don't believe that that is determined ahead of time in the plan. And then there's the final point. The overall position of the family, as they expressed it at the meeting, was that they wanted to complete this section, they have a lot of land in the area, and a lot of the land they have in the area doesn't particularly butt, butt up against anything that is already established. So why not give this community a break and build where there isn't anybody to come to the meeting to object? Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no clapping. Just to address something that keeps coming up, quite a few of us have actually been there, that parcel, we, it's part of our homework, folks. Anybody else wishing to speak? Going once, going twice, public hearing is now closed. Bring it back to the commission, I'd like to ask the applicant and staff to come back up. First and foremost, Joe, can you, on behalf of the town, talk to us about the evacuation plan, evacuation study that is kind of ongoing?
I was not involved with that, I don't know if Richard or Gary were perhaps involved with that, and may want to...
Gary's coming up, so here we go.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Gary Davis, Community Development. Back in the spring, we did an emergency access evaluation plan, which was presented to council. And it identified locations that are existing potential evacuation routes and also actual potential evacuation routes that aren't in place yet but could be prioritized for future. That's an ongoing process. That's a draft plan. Will always be a draft plan. And we'll keep adding more available routes to that as they become available. But we did identify exits in the Stone Ridge, both obviously on Stone Ridge Drive up to 69, but also both directions of Old Black Canyon Highway as well. And some potential long-range routes to the south, southwest, towards some of the county development out there.
Thank you, Gary.
Let's supplement Gary's remarks. Richard Parker, Community Development Department. Coincidentally, I met with Yavapai County Supervisors, Mary Mallory and Tom Thurman today. And the subject matter was a potential IGA between the county and the town of Prescott Valley to have Yavapai County pave both legs of the Black Canyon Highway, principally because the emergency evacuation plan that was reviewed by this body and ultimately adopted by town council identified this area as the highest area of concern because of the fuel loading that exists. That discussion will continue into the coming months. It's intended, at least as represented to me today by those two supervisors, that the upcoming fiscal year, they run on a July-to-July basis, that that's intended to be included in the county's two-year interval plan. Do one side once, do the next side the following year. It's not an absolute conclusion that will take place, but it's been the first time in quite a while that I've had county supervisors in my office wanting to assist in emergency evacuation. Not to get into the detail, but one might ask, how does the developer benefit? Well, the developer benefits because ultimately they have additional ingress egress. But ultimately, developer would pay or repay the county, reimburse that over a period of time for that leg that benefits the developer. And that would be the leg to the west. I thought that would be pertinent to your discussions this evening.
I appreciate that, Richard. Thank you. Joe, one of the things I -- you know, just for clarification, one of the things that was brought up was on the map, there are 17 lots within basically that -- well, I know, and then there's two that are custom homes. Is that correct? Making it a total of 19. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the 966, they got cut off when I paced this on here.
966 and 967.
Are there two more? Is there a 65?
Yes. Yeah, 966 and 967.
But anyway, yes, so--
Okay.
19 got cut off.
So 17 and then two custom, correct?
Yeah.
I can even ask the applicant that as well, but--
So based on previously concerns or inquiries about the lots, the revised narrative you got, revised plat did show the elevations, and they're on here. I can't make them out. And they were preliminary. But again, engineer can probably give a reference to the current lots and the--
Appreciate that. Definitely. Come on up.
Commissioners, Scott Lyon, Lyon Engineering. Yes, on the second rendition of the supplemental map, the elevations were provided for the approximate pad engineering that we've done to date so far. The terrain slopes from west to east. The design of the padding, the layouts of the roads, everything else is following that existing topography from west to east as well. The west side, we are actually below grade, actually coming down. And as we move to the west, we stay above, staying above the wash to the south to prevent any kind of flooding or anything like that. And then along Lucky Draw, we are above and elevated above the existing roadway.
So what would be the average lot elevation?
They all step. They vary. So there's about two feet in between each one. And then as you get to the very northeast corner, you have up to five feet of pad difference. So there's a substantial elevation range due to the topography of the existing ground.
Okay.
From what I'm looking at, it looks like the cul-de-sac there on the far west end is somewhere between 15 to 18 feet below Goose Flat. Does that look about right?
I would say that is correct because there is a significant fill slope for Goose Flat, and the Goose Flat is in the air, correct?
Any other questions? We -- can you -- yeah, I can hear it. Can you just repeat what you just said?
Goose Flat is elevated above existing ground substantially, at least 10 to 18 feet above the cul-de-sac. That was pointed out by the commissioner here. So the existing Goose Flat was filled initially, so it is well above existing grade natural ground that was out there.
Thank you. Then kind of a question for staff. Let's just say hypothetical Humboldt Unified had decided to put a school on this site. We wouldn't be meeting here this evening, correct?
You -- not for public hearing. You would have reviewed a preliminary development plan.
And that is it?
Correct. The zoning would allow that. And you would have reviewed a preliminary development plan prior to going to town council for a final development plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Public hearing, not necessarily.
Any other questions or comments?
I have none.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll bring it to -- we're going to vote first, and then we'll vote on everything first and then with this one, and then go to the other things. So this time, is there a motion to approve General Plan Amendment 19-004?
I make the motion to approve ZMC 19-013.
Hold on. We're just -- we have to do individual votes, Charlie. So right now, we're just looking for a motion to approve General Plan Amendment 19-004.
Okay. I make a motion to approve ZMC 19-003 with the following conditions.
We're doing the general plan amendment, not the zoning map change right now.
I'll make a motion to approve GPA 19-004.
Okay, my apologies.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gator?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. This time, is there a motion to approve zoning map change 19-013 with the following conditions: compliance with all town code provisions and preliminary development plan PDP 19-010.
I make the motion now to approve ZMC 19-013 with the condition: compliance with all town code provisions and preliminary development plan PDP 19-010.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gator?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. This time, is there a motion to approve preliminary development plan 19-010 with the following conditions: approval by the town council of a final development plan in accordance with Town Code Article 13-19 and Chapter 14, consistent with preliminary development plan, and then B, installation of public improvements and dedications as required by the town engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve PDP 19-010 with the two conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's a moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gator?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. All right, moving on. To my fellow commissioners, do we need a break at all?
No.
Artie, do we need a break at all? Do we need a break? We'll just give it a few minutes, Gary, before things clear out. If we can, can we please take discussion out into the auditorium, please? Thank you. All right, Gary, I think we'll go ahead and get started.
Short of the fact that I was grouped on O4, whatever.
All right. So item number three is General Plan Amendment 19-003 upon the application of Jasper Eco Development LLC, a request for a minor general plan amendment from medium-density residential to medium-high-density residential on approximately 26 acres, located on the east side of Jasper Parkway, approximately 1,300 feet north of Santa Fe Loop and 1,000 feet west of Granville Fairway in Prescott Valley. Item number four, zoning map change 19-011 upon the application of Jasper Eco Development LLC, a request for zoning map change from R1M PAD, Residential Single-Family Mixed Housing Planned Area Development, to R2 PAD, Residential Multi-Dwelling Units Planned Area Development on approximately 26 acres, located on the east side of Jasper Parkway, approximately 1,300 feet north of Santa Fe Loop and 1,000 feet west of Granville Fairway in Prescott Valley, and the accompanying preliminary development plan, preliminary -- preliminary development plan 19-008 upon the application of Jasper Eco Development LLC, a request for preliminary development plan for proposed 252-unit multifamily development on approximately 26 acres, located on the east side of Jasper Parkway, approximately 1,300 feet north of Santa Fe Loop and 1,000 feet west of Granville Fairway in Prescott Valley. Presenting this evening is Mr. Gary Davis. Gary, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you said, the applicant proposes a 252-unit, single-story, multifamily residential development on a 26-acre site. That site was originally planned for single-family development under Jasper's original 2014 development master plan. Three applications, as you indicated, are required, and all three are being considered jointly tonight by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The proposed use would require changes to both the general plan land use designation and the zoning classification, and approval of preliminary development plan that accompanies the zoning map change. Staff recommends approval of all three applications subject to the conditions that are in your packet. The proposed development is consistent with the vision, guiding principles, goals, and policies of General Plan 2025. When compared with the single-family development that had been approved on the same site, the proposed multifamily use would have similarly low impacts on nearby neighborhoods, would provide so-called "missing middle" housing that would help diversify the type and price of housing in Prescott Valley, and would have a positive fiscal impact for the town due to increased population and reduced public infrastructure. Recommended conditions are intended to minimize impacts on nearby neighborhoods and to require a new public hearing process if the developer proposes significant changes to the site plan in the future. On the graphics, the site is located on the east side of the new Jasper Parkway, just north of Santa Fe Loop Road. This graphic shows the existing zoning in the area. The yellow is R1M PAD, and the light yellow is R1L10 PAD to the east. Directly to the east is Salem and Haskins Drives that are in the Granville development. The original zoning that you see on the left side of the screen here, that's two sections of land, and that was zoning that was put in place that was based on the original 2014 plan that was submitted for what was then called Glassford Heights. You see the subject property here, located, again, on Jasper Parkway. And the area in red is the entire Jasper development as proposed. The plan changed a little bit in 2017. This was the new configuration, conceptual phasing plan, Phase 1. That is a subdivision that has already been approved and is now under construction. That will have 362 lots. Phase 2 is pending right now. That will have 290 lots. The area in yellow is the subject property for tonight's hearing. That was originally planned to be part of Phase 2 with about 65 lots on a looped street that would be dedicated to the town, that would be a public street, similar to the rest of the subdivision. They've elected to try for a multifamily 252 unit instead. The conceptual phasing plan changed a little bit in 2018. You can see things a little denser in that area. They had proposed about 241 lots in that area, and those would have been, I believe, single-family attached units. And some of them could have gone up to, I believe, two stories. And the lot count here I provide is fairly important because, as you see here on the west side of Prescott Valley, Phase 1 and Phase 2, the blue and the red, will add up to just short of 700 lots. Under the development agreement for Jasper, when the 700th lot is approved in a final development plan, then the Jasper development will be required to build and pay for, at their own cost, an extension of about two miles straight south. That'll be Jasper Parkway, and that'll connect in with the Stone Ridge intersection at Highway 69. So whether this project is built first or Phase 2, one or the other will kick in that 700-lot requirement and require the construction of two lanes of that four-lane road. And that major arterial would connect straight north up to Highway 89A as well, eventually. Applicant submitted a two-phase development plan. The first phase on the south would be 147 units. Second phase would be 105 units. Main access would be towards the center of the property off of Jasper. And a secondary access is proposed to the north of that, onto Jasper Parkway. Issue with that is that currently, under this plan, there isn't an access, a secondary access, from Phase 1 out to Jasper Parkway. And that's something that's a fire marshal issue. And so we've included a condition in our conditions of approval for the preliminary development plan that either an all-weather road be placed from the Phase 1 up to the proposed secondary access to provide that secondary emergency exit, or all the buildings will be sprinkled. One or the other would meet the fire marshal's requirements. The developer has provided some elevations, proposed a fairly modern design. The developer has provided some elevations, proposed a fairly modern design. I believe the heights would be around 15 feet, according to plans submitted by the developer. Going back to the plan, the easternmost units would be adjacent to the single-family residential that already exists down in Granville, Unit 9, in Salem. Part of our recommendations will be a minimum setback of 45 feet to minimize view shed issues onto those units. In your packet, we provided some graphics that the applicant provided to us showing the differences between what had been originally planned in the 241 attached unit configuration versus what's planned with this particular configuration. With this configuration, the buildings are farther away, and they're only single-story, whereas some of the previous could have been two-story. So that's a positive as far as reducing impacts to the east. However, just to make sure we enforce that positive, we're adding that minimum 45-foot setback requirement as well. They'll have to adhere to that when submitting the final development plan. Again, these are the two buildings. One would be a one-bedroom duplex configuration, and the other would be a two-bedroom casita standalone. These will all be rental units on a single parcel, and that's why the rezoning would be needed to go to R2, because that would be a multifamily use. But some of the buildings would be essentially standalone, look like single-family units, but it's all on one parcel. That concludes my initial report. Happy to answer questions, and I believe the applicant is here to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions of staff from the commission? So, just to clarify, just a few things. You said all of these are single-story, correct?
That's my understanding. That's what's being shown.
And then they're rental units and not owned units, is that correct?
They would be on a single parcel, single 26-acre parcel, and rented out, correct?
Do we see this anywhere else in the town, in any subdivision?
We're starting to see some of these casita or bungalow-type things. We've seen a few come through here. Some of them are in the construction phases right now, or at least in the plan review stages. It's kind of getting to be a trend to fill in kind of a niche that's growing out there.
So you're talking about, for instance, on the corner of Long Look and Glassford Hill that we approved?
Correct. Similar type of nature. Different design, but similar configurations.
Okay.
Could you explain the access road again that you're requesting? So I make sure that I understand it.
Phase 1 is in the yellow. And once Phase 1 is built, but Phase 2 is not built, then Phase 1 would only have a single access out to Jasper. And above a certain threshold, the fire marshal says you either need to have a secondary access or you'll sprinkle all the buildings.
So we're requesting it, but it's not shown as to where that's going to come in?
It's not shown on the plan right now. That's the request or the condition that we're placing on it is that that be shown at the final development plan stage.
Thank you.
Any other questions, the staff? Okay, I'll invite the applicant up. The applicant at this time.
Is it the applicant?
The applicant is coming up to speak first.
Good evening. Jason Giesi, Jasper Eco-Dev, here to answer your questions.
I'll start. And I've heard you describe Jasper as more of a high-end development. Would you describe this multifamily project as more of a high-end rental?
So Jasper, the way we look at Jasper is Jasper's a product type that isn't presently available in the town of Prescott Valley. And we had to differentiate ourselves from our competition. Joe Contadino at Granville does a great job on the, in his market segment. Obviously, Stone Ridge has their own thing going with the golf course, et cetera. So in our vision of Jasper, we're trying to do a couple of things. One, put a product out across the board, which would include this product type that is different, that isn't available in town. It looks different. It feels different. It's painted different colors. From stem to stern, it would be different. As it relates to high-end, the reality of it is, the answer is yes. I'd love to tell you that the cost to build stuff that is more, has more design, more detail to it, is just higher, plain and simple. As a result of that, the rental rates on these units would be higher than likely other comparable products within the town of Prescott Valley, especially when you get into like a stacked or multi-story apartment complex. It's more efficient to build versus a single-story product.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
My only question is, since the big sign that says, "Do not enter construction zone," how close are you coming to with the model complex and to where you're actually going to open the doors so people can come in and see your project?
So last week, finally, the two builders that will start building in Jasper were granted public reports from Arizona Department of Real Estate. So marketing will begin by the end of this month. I was in the construction meeting this morning, or this afternoon. Mondays for about four hours. That's what I do in the afternoon. The temporary gate is, they're scheduling to pull it down. Frankly, we've had it up as long as we can to keep people out. I'm going to tell you by the end of the month, the gate will be out of there. And marketing will start by the end of the month as well. I would say grand opening would be in the month of March. There are, there's quite a list of interested folks in the product, and we'll see how that converts to sales as we move forward here. We're excited.
And one more question for you. I noticed on one of the maps that, you know, it could be heavily landscaped, and Jasper in itself is beautifully landscaped. So I would imagine this is going to be pretty much the height, keeping with the high standards of landscaping that you already have.
We, that has nothing to do with the town of Prescott Valley, but Stuart Swanson, the majority owner, has mandated that things look good. And so, yes, the answer is that the landscaping would be on par with what you're seeing presently.
Thank you.
And your two builders?
The two builders in Phase 1 are Mandalay Homes and Capstone Homes. Mandalay is headquartered here in Yabai County. Capstone is from Flagstaff.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant?
This is partly for staff. I can see a need for this. I'm also wondering how this fits into the need in Prescott Valley for affordable housing.
I don't know. Either one of you could potentially answer that.
Could be. Something I addressed in the staff report is what's now kind of commonly called "missing middle" housing. This is housing that isn't single-family, or traditional single-family detached homes, or the high-rise product that Mr. Giesi was talking about, but something in the middle, something that is more on a scale with a single-family surrounding developments, something that doesn't have a lot of impact on it, but still provides more density, more units per acre, and a different product, maybe a different price point than the neighboring, neighboring, single-family homes. So it helps with the diversity of housing types, products like this, which, like I say, are new. We haven't actually seen them hit the ground yet. But it's something that we hope will add to the diversity, and with diversity and more quantity, can help alleviate some of the pressure on housing prices.
Thank you.
I wanted to add one thing that I neglected to mention before is that Jasper did a traffic impact analysis in 2018, and that was based on the configuration I showed you earlier where this pad was proposed for 241 attached, single-family units. Since then, for this application, as I mentioned in the staff report, they have supplied us with an addendum to that, or an append, an addendum that recalculates based on 252 units, rental units, one- and two-bedroom. And even though the number is slightly higher, the number of units is slightly higher because of the use, the traffic impact is actually slightly lower based on the way traffic engineers figure traffic impacts or in trip generation.
And if I'm not mistaken, Gary, when we approved Unit 14 for Granville, we included some provisions that basically the town was going to look into some traffic mediation for Santa Fe Loop and Granville Fairway, as well as Tuscany and Santa Fe Loop. So I know those are the main intersections as you're heading east from the Jasper development.
And as I said before, whether Phase 2, single-family, or this project goes forward first, it will kick in the requirement to build that additional two-lane road straight down to Highway 69.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm good.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Again, speakers are limited to a three-minute period, and upon the conclusion of the three minutes, please promptly finish your remarks. And if you wish to comment, please come on up and state your name for the record.
My name is Bill Thomas, resident of Granville, and we live on Salem Place, which is just adjacent to the east side of the proposed building over here. I'm curious on this area right down here. It doesn't indicate here. I can obviously see there's no structures on it. What is that? And along here, is this just an elevation or a green belt, or what?
We'll have that answered for you, sir.
Okay. Secondly, there's always been concern about runoff along this side here, which is adjacent to the houses over here. When we get decent water runoff, it flows down here very, very heavily. Likewise, will this have any impact on the flow through the culverts which come through here? I know we've got some restrictions as to what the flow can be as compared to what it was prior to construction. A few months ago, I'm not talking the 100-year flood we had about a year ago, but a few months ago, we had another substantial rainstorm, and this was flowing dramatically. We live in the very last house. Am I hitting something here? I fat-thumbed it there.
Essentially, you back up to this proposal, correct, sir?
Right.
Okay.
Where the water comes off of where those units are going to be, there's a large amount of erosion which runs through that right now. So that's got to be addressed. Otherwise, that then will compound the problem of the flooding behind our house. And yes, we have invested in flood insurance. But I want to be sure that that's addressed right there, or looked at it. It'd be nice if that was shared so we have some degree of comfort with that.
Definitely could have the applicant address that for you. Thank you. Anybody else? Sir, speak into the microphone and just state your name for the record.
H-A-M-M-E-S. I can, I can see, you know, the 701 mark.
Sir, I need you to speak into the microphone and address your comments to us.
When you hit the 701 mark, that's when you got to do the Jasper Parkway that hits into Stone Ridge, correct?
Sir, I need you to address your comments and questions to the commission. We can have someone address them after.
Okay, folks. At the 701 mark on the units, that's when the Jasper Parkway turns into Stone Ridge and goes to 69. I understand it's already been approved, the lands, county, whatever, state, it's got that zoned in for that. My, what I want to know is, how long is it going to take? When's it going to kick in? Because the traffic is really going to pick up when this thing takes off. How long is it going to take?
Okay, sir, we will have that addressed. Thank you. After public comments are done, sir, we will invite everyone back up.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Lervy. I also live on Salem Place. I took a look at this, and I have the plans that they passed out.
Let me speak a little bit more into the microphone, sir.
I took a look at this earlier, and I have the plans that they passed out at the last meeting. According to what they were talking about earlier, originally this was set up for 65 lots, which would have been 65 individual homes. If you take two cars to a house, you're looking at 130 or so cars in there. Now, if that's the case, with this new one with 255 units, you're looking at 500 cars in that same space. If you only drive the car one trip a day, that's one trip in and one trip out, you're looking at large numbers of vehicles coming in and out of there. The property was originally set up as a single-family dwelling area, and that's what I think that the people who live there expect you to abide by. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak?
My name is Gail Fuson, and I'm in Unit 9 that borders this planned property. I've talked to Jason about traffic at that intersection several times. This development has been a bitter pill for all the people in Granville that are impacted by it. To make matters worse, you're throwing in the multi-home unit right next to the people in Granville. It's kind of like a slap in the face. Why doesn't the builder put the multi-homes in the middle of the development instead of putting it next to us? And we worry about crime rates. You say the houses cost more to build. Yes. But are they impacted by the HUD laws of Arizona? Are there going to be any low-income people in it? Why wasn't it moved, if it's so beloved by the developer? Why wasn't it put in the middle of the whole development instead of sticking it over to the edge next to us? Already, when the majority of us in Unit 9 that are impacted are here tonight, when we pull out of the, onto Granville Fairway and Santa Fe Loop, I have almost been hit by cement trucks bombing through the intersection to go to work. Yesterday, I had a man go through at about 40 miles an hour. Apparently, somebody who works for Jasper must have been late for work. Somebody's going to get injured there. There's a lot of traffic going through there. I realize you're not involved with the traffic, but this is going to add a lot more traffic to that intersection. It's already hard enough for us in Unit 9 to make a left-hand turn now because of everything that's going on. Ask the builder to move everything. I don't mind multifamily homes. Why put them next to us? We don't want them. If you're going to do anything, put the single family in next to us. Move the multifamily into another unit. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
As advertised...
Sir, can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Glenn Gustafson. As advertised, this body is called the Planning and Zoning Commission. The first word is "planning." There are several aspects associated with planning. But one of those, and the key aspect, is "future," not "present," "future." You create the problems that are already present with the planning that has gone on previously. previously, that this body is a part of. You create the future problems that are exacerbated by introducing twice as many more cars in one small parcel. You've already approved one set of applications that increases the amount of traffic that's present for Prescott Valley, the town of Prescott Valley, to accommodate. Think about the future.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Good evening.
My name is Michelle Schimmelman, and I live on Salem, right butting up against Jasper. Couple of questions I have for the developer. There is a setback. They're talking about a 40-foot setback. I've also heard about an 85-foot setback due to the drainage of the water that is coming down through that area. We've seen it flow incredibly high. My other concern, I did my due diligence. That was residential. It is zoned for residential. So why now are we wanting to turn it to multi-family in the middle of a housing development? Please ask those questions.
Anybody else? Come on up. Want to state? Oh, sorry.
Hi, my name is Pat Stoffer. I have a couple of questions. Do we know what the average square footage of these new homes are going to be?
We'll get that answered.
Can you also ask, what's the average price per square foot? Okay? I'm assuming there's a ballpark because they're creating a budget, so they're knowing what it's going to cost and what they hope to sell it for. Is there a percentage that these apartments that are going to be rented will be subsidized, low-income? And I'm confused on the, when the egress is required. So your, your first part of the phase, you have a road coming in, and then at some point you'll have the road coming out to support fire evacuation, or it was hard to hear back there, were, were they saying to be sprinkled? So you're putting sprinklers in the homes?
We'll get that clarified for you.
Well, is, okay, if you're not building the homes with the sprinklers, then what do you do from the building of the first home until you have enough homes built that you have the safety evacuation?
We'll definitely get that clarified for you. Not a problem. Anybody else? You only get to speak once, sorry. Sorry, sorry, those, it's part of the rules. Should have read that. Yes, you only get to speak once. All right. Anybody else? All right. Going once, going twice, close the public hearing for the general plan amendment, zoning map change, and preliminary development plan. Do any commissioners, before I ask staff and the applicant to come back up, do any commissioners have any other questions?
I don't know.
I do, I do share concerns about these four-way stops, and I agree that our previous planning has failed, just traffic-wise. And we need to see a four-way stop at that intersection and those, basically those two intersections on Santa Fe Loop. And honestly, I don't, I can't approve anything that will not do that. So I don't care what it takes. I don't, I don't, I don't understand why it takes an act of Congress practically to get a four-way stop sign in this town. That is not appropriate, and our planning in the past has failed us, and we need to do something about it, and I think we have the ability to do something about it now. So, that being said, I would like to have staff and the applicant come back up and definitely address some of the concerns that have been made and some of the questions that have been raised. So please, go for it.
Thank you. I hope someone was taking notes. I can't memorize it all. Gary, if you could, let's talk drainage first. Perfect, thank you. So as the citizen pointed out, we have CMPs coming underneath Jasper Parkway. Maybe I could use your pointer. In this lo, in this location on the southern end of the project, this is all large drainage. The question was asked, in essence, what's the difference between the pre- and post-condition of the drainage for this 26 acres? So the law is such that we cannot increase the amount of runoff from the, the pre-development condition to the post-development condition. So what we will do, this was also part of the question, is there's detention basins that will be utilized on top of the pad to collect the water and then meter it out into the master drainage locations, which are south in this location for the master plan, and then up north in this location as well. How did I do? Did I get both drainage questions answered there?
I think you did.
Okay. Thank you. Help me out with the rest.
Setbacks.
Price per square foot.
And well, setbacks and then price, price per square foot and so forth.
I mean, just, that seems like it'd be.
The setback, to me, is multidimensional because it's actually in 3D. We have a difference in the pad elevation here, where our pad is higher than the existing residents in Granville in this location. And then there would also be the actual setback from the property line to the beginning of the first structure. The 45-foot number, I've got to be honest, this was the first time I heard about 45 feet today. Didn't, didn't make me, it seems like that can be worked out in a reasonable manner. The, the bottom line is that in a rental community, we're considered commercial in the town of Prescott Valley, and it, I don't know of any land development code that doesn't require commercial to buffer itself from residential application. That's our responsibility. That gets done with not only space or distance, but also the way things are landscaped. And in our case, because we're not flat, we also have the advantage of a slope on the edge of the pad that is not buildable. So that slope moves uphill to us, creating more space. So I'll look at the 45 feet, obviously. My initial reaction to it is that seems reasonable and fine. Fire sprinklers versus secondary access. Code is real simple. This is a CAFMA issue. We either have to provide two forms of ingress and egress, or we have to sprinkler. In the case of this project, I would anticipate that we will not sprinkler, that we will, we will get the fire chief, he will agree to a secondary access point that is acceptable to him. That's a requirement that's on us, that's not, you know, you guys, it's, it'll be a condition of approval on your end, it's my job to go get that done with the fire chief. As, as far as pricing goes, marketplace presently, $1.32 a square foot, all the way up to $1.50 a square foot. As, as was mentioned, we are in a budget estimation phase. It's not a situation where we have an approved project, we don't have a full set of blueprints, we haven't bid this out. My expectation is we'll be on the high end of that range. I'm hopeful, but when I look at what vertical construction costs have been doing in the state of Arizona, they continue to climb. Our state is in demand, the inter-mountain west is in demand, people continue to want to move here. Some of those people live in rental houses, other people buy all kinds of different houses. Depends on their price point and what they can afford.
Do you want to address anything with regard to traffic?
Sure. I have heard repeatedly about the four-way stop that is needed. It's not my purview. I don't disagree with the comments. I have not almost been hit when I've been out there, but it seems obvious that a four-way stop is necessary at Granville Parkway and Santa Fe Loop. Secondary piece of that, our original traffic impact analysis was about, I complained a lot about this in 2014. We spent about $45,000 on our traffic impact analysis, and I don't think I'm stretching it to say that we have the most exact and detailed traffic impact analysis in the town of Prescott Valley. And so we updated that traffic impact analysis based on this concept. Gary already commented that we, we, there was no adverse impact of, of this type of development. When I first shoved off on this project, the, the value that I see for the neighbor is a single-story unit versus the potential of a, a two-story unit. We presently have the right to build two-story houses, and we have two builders who would be interested in building two-story houses, not out of spider-causing problems, but because in a two-story scenario, more bedroom count can be achieved in a more efficient manner. It's, it's cheaper to build the second story, is what it boils down to. Is residential housing viable on this pad? Absolutely. Should we not gain approval? That's what we will do. I couldn't tell you if that'd be, you know, a single-story, two-story, or a mix of both. Obviously, this pad has a very nice view shot. So it's attractive one way or another. We think it's a better use. Obviously, people don't agree with me day-to-day all the time. That's, that's for the folks at the town of Prescott Valley to decide based on our application.
Wanted to know if you can address the timeline, or just, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, it's not.
Yeah. So our, our, our basic expectation is that Phase 1 is going to move briskly. We, we think that we're hitting the market with good timing, and there'll be demand for our product. Phase 2 is already permitted. It's engineered and permitted. We, we anticipate starting Phase 2 in the month of March 2020. We are working on Phase 3 and 4, which is going to end up, I think, being one large phase, Phase 3. We're engineering that presently, along with, we can't engineer the Jasper Parkway extension to Highway 69 yet because we don't have, it's not our job to get it per the development agreement, but the town is to secure the right-of-way from state land. And so the original location that we estimated might be, the, the alignment going over to Highway 69 is actually shifted somewhat already downhill. That, that line may move. So the exact location of that roadway needs to be identified for us to do anything other than the preliminary engineering to build the road. I anticipate that we will be building the road in conjunction with the construction of Phase 3, simply based on the time it takes to deal with Arizona State Land Department. That's not a quick task. And so I guess I am a betting man. I don't, I don't gamble in Vegas, but I do for a living, I suppose. I'm going to tell you that we anticipate starting Phase 3 construction in approximately 24 months. We, we don't see an issue with demand for our product presently.
Wanted to know if you can address, or we can have staff address it, but low-income housing or subsidized housing came up.
Oh, yeah. Good. No, this is not a HUD subsidized project. I'm going to say that twice. This is not a HUD subsidized project. This would be a market project, zero subsidy from the federal government, period.
So average, like, price per square foot? I know that came up.
Yeah. I, I think it's going to be around $1.50 a square foot, so a thousand-square-foot unit would rent for $1,500 a month. There should be people that go, well, that's more than my mortgage. Gary spoke to it earlier. What we're seeing is demographically, there are multiple groups, and, and I'll use an example of a divorcee, someone who's resetting their life, that, that might be a renter for some extended period of time, and they're not buying houses. The other group that is renting specifically single-story rental units are older-age retirees. They, they don't see the need or the want to own their own house and maintain it. They want to live in a community that gets maintained for them, and they don't, they're not so concerned about the American dream. I, I need to own my house. I need a nice, safe place to live, is the concern. In this case, this is a gated community with private streets. The association will maintain all of, of the landscaping in the streets, and so personally, it, it would be expensive. But part of that rental rate is the cost to maintain the real estate asset that someone's living in because they're not responsible, they're responsible for paying their pro-rata share, they're not responsible for causing the work to get done or taking care of the yard maintenance themselves.
Any other questions of the applicant? No? Thank you, Jason. Any other questions of staff?
No.
All right. We'll bring, bring it back. Which one was that, ma'am? I'm sorry.
850 to 1,000 would be the approximation on the square footage. If it's a single occupancy, be in the 850 range. If, if it's a two-bedroom unit, and that's what I meant by single occupancy, is a single bedroom unit. If it's a, if it's a two-bedroom unit, it'd be, you know, in the 1,000, might be 1050. You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. So we'll bring it back to the commission for comments and/or motion. Do any commissioners have any comments?
I'm concerned about the stop sign thing.
Go ahead and speak into the microphone, Gary.
No, I'm just concerned about the stop sign. I live in Granville. I know the traffic is miserable. And I'm just worried about the four-way stop sign. I mean, can we make a provision in that or not?
Unfortunately, I mean, from what, you know, Richard even said, when we approved Unit 14, we can't order a stop sign. Council can, from what I understand, and that is something that I would like to see council, and I see one of our council members in the audience, I'd like to see council actually take up this cause and actually put in a four-way stop, both, at both intersections, for public safety. Public safety is one of our biggest things that we have to address, and again, our past actions, I think, have really hurt the residents in that area.
So I'll tell you what, I'll be meeting with the town manager tomorrow morning. I'll bring it up with him again, suggest that he asks the public works department to either request dollars to do the, the study to justify the end result, which is a four-way stop. As I mentioned before, there are transportation engineering standards that have to be reviewed by technical people to justify traffic changes on major roads. The liability associated with not doing that is significant. People have more rear-end accidents when you have four-way stops. There's actually more conflicting movements with four-way stops.
That's true.
So it has to be determined that that's the best alternative before that takes place. Again, I will bring that to the manager's attention. I'm sure he'll be very attentive to the commission's recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or concerns from the commission?
It was just a stop sign thing was my concern. I will recommend to the residents.
Go ahead and speak into the microphone, Gary.
The, the Prescott Valley Police Department does control Granville pretty good, and if I was you, I would call and tell them where the hot areas are. Okay. Because they've been there, I may have seen them.
They're going to open up that pretty large intersection. They come down, they shut the door. Okay.
Is there, is there a way, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
Is there a way we can make a recommendation, not requiring it, but a recommendation to the council to, to look at that? I mean, we can't require it, I know.
I think some of the verbiage that we
Is there a way we can make a recommendation, not requiring it, but a recommendation to the council to, to look at that? I mean, we can't require it, I know.
I think some of the verbiage that we can, you know, add to condition, it would be part of the, I mean, it could be conditioned for all three. I don't really, I guess really more for the PDP. But something along the lines with what Richard said, that he is planning on having a conversation with town staff about said issue.
Okay.
And that he's going to share our concerns about that. Everyone agrees. I mean, we had Joe Cottonino up here. Jason's even said, everyone agrees that a four-way stop is needed there. But there are steps that have to be taken to,
I understand.
to basically research the issue and, and go from there. So I definitely think some, some form of verbiage along those lines, if anybody can, you know, basically think of something, we could add it. But basically, that it's going to be, you know, addressed by town staff with the commission's concerns, as well as even the two developers' concerns, as well as the public's concerns. So I definitely think adding something along those lines would be appropriate, if there's no objection. So at this time, is there any other comments, concerns from the commission? So at this time, is there a, let's see. Okay, so we could add it to the record, okay.
So the stipulation would regard review and approval of a traffic analysis of those two intersections. And I think one is at Tuscany and, and Santa Fe Loop. I don't know the other cross-street. But those two intersections, to determine the, the value or validity of creating four-way stops at those prior to final development plan approval. That would be the gist of your motion. And that'll bring it to the attention of the town council because they'll see it in approximately a month if this is forwarded to the council for their consideration on the zoning map change and general plan amendment. So it is in the record. It is a stipulation. It's a hurdle that has to be accomplished prior to further considerations.
Mr. Parker, does that have to be added to each of the items or just as a, a general?
In addition to the preliminary development?
I would add it to the, I would add it to the zoning map change action only because that addresses the issue head-on and says this is something we need to look at. That is not to say that the engineering study, if one is authorized, won't come back and say that's not the best solution for those intersections. There may be other things that may improve traffic flows there to be considered. But that would force the issue. I'll certainly, again, have that conversation. I'm sure the manager's going to be very receptive to that. But those things take some time.
So with that, we'll bring it back to the commission for motion or further discussion. Seeing no further discussion. Is there a motion to approve General Plan Amendment 19-003 with the conditions as outlined in our packet? You can say so moved, anybody. You don't have to read everything again.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. Zoning ma, is there a motion to approve zoning map change 19-011 with the conditions as outlined, as well as the additional condition?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve ZMC 19-011, subject to the included conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
I would like to propose an amendment to the amendment because I did not hear a condition.
So.
About the.
We'll, we'll quick have Mr. Parker read it again for that, for clarification.
Commissioner Rutherford, the gist of the recommendation is that as part of the zoning map change recommendation, if you proffer that to the town council, it includes a reference to studying this issue and having a resolution to the four-way stop issue prior to any subsequent review and approval of a final development plan. That would set in motion concrete steps, which would be, in essence, hurdles that would have to be overcome before it would come to the council for final approval.
Yes, I, I realize that, but I did not hear that included in our motion.
I believe that was the case. So your motion to clarify, if I can help you, would be to add said motion in the late, the, the last one. So you are correct in amending that motion. So for you folks, you would ask, is there a second to our amendment?
Yes.
You would ask if that should be included, and then afterwards, act on the motion.
Okay, so basically, we have a motion for an amendment on the floor. It's, I'm hearing a second. So what we'll do is do two roll call votes. One for the zoning map change. It's been moved and seconded, and then with regard to the amendment.
You, you would do the amendment to the amendment first?
Amendment first, okay. We'll do that first, then, absolutely. So it is basically, let's, let's actually do it this way. If everyone approves the amendment, we can actually do this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, seeing nobody opposed to the amendment, we'll take it back to the full zoning map change. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. And finally, Preliminary Development Plan 19-008, upon passage of a, most, excuse me. Is there a motion to approve Preliminary Plan Development, excuse me, Preliminary Development Plan 19-008 for development of 252 one-story units subject to the conditions as outlined in our packets?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those, excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. All right, item number nine is call to public. Consideration discussions, discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be delimited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. So with this call to public, sometimes we get people coming up and speaking about issues that have already been spoken about. That is not allowed. Anybody having, anybody, anything else can come up and speak, anybody? Come on up, sir.
Thomas, not sure if I understood your caveats. If I have another, another issue, which I, I've already spoken once up here, that I want to bring up, is this the appropriate time?
If it's already been addressed here this evening, sir? No, then if you have another issue that has nothing to do with anything that's been discussed here this evening?
Say anything. It deals with this addition right here.
No.
Okay.
That cannot be discussed. Anything else that has not been discussed here this evening? All right, closing call to public. Can take it to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned. Thank you.